Nagerschaff.
Present.
Johnson.
Present.
Trumbetta.
Present.
Caladrino.
Present.
Perkins.
Present.
Visconti.
Present.
Chinis.
Present.
Esposito.
Present.
Sadi.
Present.
Cabo.
Present.
Basso.
Present.
Rotello.
Here.
Diggs.
Here.
Ty Schultz.
Present.
Consumpus.
Present.
Riley.
Here.
Saraceno.
Here.
Seaberry.
Here.
Stanley.
Here.
Taversek.
Here.
Twenty present, one absent.
The record reflect that there are twenty present, one absent, but the record also reflect that Councilman Sadi is on training for the weekend and he's out of town. The first thirty minutes of each council meeting are reserved for public speaking. I ask any member of the public that wishes to address the council, please do so about an item that is on the agenda and you must be a taxpayer and or resident of the city of Danbury. With that, I think St. Greg's has a statement they'd like to make, so we're gonna hear from them first.
My name is Catherine Sniffen. I'm a resident of the city of Danbury from St. Gregory the Great School. Thirty years ago as a student, I went to my first environmental fair. The environment is still an issue for me. My students are learning about the greenhouse effect and the effect that we all, all of our actions are having on the environment, and my students would like to talk to you a little bit about some of the things that they're learning. Item number fifteen on the agenda has to do with a clean air initiative and we support this initiative because it's important for all of us.
Good evening, Mayor Bowden and members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Brian Hatcher and I am a student in the seventh grade of St. Gregory the Great School. I am a member of the Coolit team at St. Gregory's. We are participating in a challenge that was offered to middle school and high school students in Connecticut to create and submit proposals to help stop global warming and reduce CO2 emissions. We plan to educate and motivate our school community and local community to make changes that will reduce our CO2 footprint on our environment. We support Mayor Bowden's proposal to increase the usage of clean power in Danbury.
My name is Steven Rivera, a member of the St. Gregory the Great School Coolit Team. The mayor would like the city of Danbury to be purchasing twenty percent of its energy from a clean source by the year 2010. One possible way of producing energy is by using the power of the sun. There is a proposal that has been made to the Connecticut Clean Energy Fund to install solar panels on the old Danbury landfill. These panels will cover thirteen acres of land and will produce 1.5 megawatts of electricity. This is enough electricity to power seventy homes for every hour of the summer time. I think this is a good way to provide electricity by using a natural resource without affecting the environment.
Hello, I'm Connie McCann and I am a member of the Coolit Challenge Team of St. Gregory the Great School. Right now, we are trying our best to cut down on global warming through our school. We will be replacing our school's gym light with more energy efficient lights thanks to a generous donation from the Connecticut Energy Fund. Our current gym lights are old and use a lot of energy, and we hope that the new lights will use less energy. We are replacing our eighteen four hundred watt Hyden lights with Tebet fluorescent lights. We will be saving over two thousand three hundred dollars per year and we will release almost one million pounds of gas of CO2. Imagine what could happen if the whole city did this? Hopefully, the rest of the city will consider replacing lights and other ways to stop global warming.
Is all that for mayor anytime soon?
Good evening. My name is David Lasco and I am on the St. Gregory the Great Coolit Challenge Team. Global warming is one factor of human life that can actually damage our very existence. CO2 emissions are being let into the atmosphere every day. One thing that lets out a lot of CO2 is the furnace at St. Gregory the Great School. In fact, every year it lets out one hundred forty-eight thousand forty-two point eight six pounds of CO2 in the air. That means that if every building in Danbury lets out this much CO2, then our carbon footprint is huge. Our school is cleaning the furnace filter, checking the furnace annually, installing smart stats in all of our rooms just to help lower our carbon emissions. Hopefully, everyone in Danbury can do the same thing. Together, we can lower our CO2 emissions by twenty percent by 2010. We can all make a difference.
Good job.
Hello. My name is Ryan Barton. I came here tonight to discuss about global warming. I joined the Coolit team because honestly, I wasn't sure about what we can all do together or what I can do alone to cut down on CO2. When I joined the Coolit team, I realized what causes CO2 and what CO2 is. Seeing what causes CO2 shocked me by thinking about how my house and how much energy we use. An average house uses a lot of different energy sources. There can be many different things that use up energy like TVs, computers, refrigerators, furnaces, and lights. Lights use a lot of energy mainly because there are so many light bulbs in every house. One way we can all save energy is by using the dark hour at least once a week. I am a member of the St. Gregory, St. Gregory the Great School Coolit Team and I'm proud to be a member. Thank you.
Good job.
Hello, my name is Wyatt Bosworth and I am a sixth grade member in the St. Gregory the Great School Coolit Challenge Team. As you know already, my team members and myself are working on preventing the overall rise in the earth's temperature. I really think Mayor Bowden's proposal to increase clean energy to power its buildings is a great idea. With the twenty percent by 2010, we will have a great way of reducing global warming. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Pamela Rosetti and I am a member of the St. Greg, Gregory the Great School Coolit Team. One way to reduce CO2 emissions twenty percent by 2010 is through carpooling. Did you know that eighteen percent of all global carbon dioxide emissions are from motorized vehicles? Another proven fact is that you save about twenty-two cents for every person you carpool with each mile. For each gallon of gasoline saved, you conserve about twenty pounds of carbon dioxide emission. If we don't start reducing CO2 emissions, what kind of example in future are we setting for others? U.S. city officials can set the example for your neighbors, family, and other people you know. Please help us in our fight against global warming. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kristy Kuleji and I'm another sixth grade member of the Coolit Challenge Group. Our team is trying to prevent further global warming one step at a time. St. Gregory the Great School is trying to set an example for the city of Danbury. Our team is preparing to pass out tip sheets throughout the school on the day of the science fair. We are doing this so that the family of St. Greg's will know what we, will learn about what we are doing and try to help and know how they can help. The Coolit Challenge Team also sent out surveys throughout our school so we could learn more about the CO2 that is going into the air. Many parents volunteered to help us by either cleaning the furnace, changing the lights to more efficient lights, or by coming to the meetings to help us gather information. Every person who volunteers to help us is making a difference in our school and community. These things might seem like small changes, but we will set an example for others so that they will join us and try to save our earth. Thank you.
Good job.
Hello, my name is Nicholas Johnson and I'm a member of New Jersey. I am very concerned about the effect that global warming is having on our planet. Global warming is having, is changing the earth quite so slowly that it can be easily ignored, but it's damaging nothing. Our polar packs are melting. The polar bear population is decreasing. The bears are slowly drowning because the pack is melting and the bears have nowhere to live. My challenge as a Coolit member is to spread the word about these damaging effects. I try my best to be aware of the things that I could do to help. Turning off lights, dressing warmer, not using the TV for three weeks are all things that I could do to reduce my carbon footprint. I really enjoy skiing at Lake Erie every winter. I hope that hundreds of children in Central Yorktown can enjoy skiing there too.
Hello, my name is Nicholas Carlson and I am a member of the St. Gregory the Great Coolit Challenge Team. I believe that by joining twenty percent by 2010, we will not only save energy but help save our world. In the summer of 2005, I visited Alaska and saw glaciers and the many animals that inhabit them. I care for these animals and would not want them to be harmed by human activity. I have heard that many glaciers have been melting around the world recently. Last summer, I visited India where my dad works. I visited the Taj Mahal in Agar where it's usually very hot, but when we went there, the temperature reached an abnormal high of one hundred and fifteen degrees Fahrenheit. I saw the movie In Convenient Truth, and as we will be illustrated, the seas in eastern India could be totally covered up in water in a couple of years because of the sea level rising as a result of the glaciers melting. Because of poverty, it would hard, it would be hard for the people to evacuate. This could cause death, the deaths of millions of innocent people. If we start using energy efficient items in our community, we could be saving lives. Thank you.
Could we give those kids a round of applause? Thank you for your participation and Mrs. Sniffen, congratulations on a wonderful class and keep up the good work at St. Gregory's. Good job. Is there any other member of the public that wishes to address the council this evening? Yes, ma'am.
We do you.
Ma'am, just your name and address to the record.
We're, raise all your hands. I'm sorry, hey, boy. We're a total of eighteen families. We're here to address item number twenty-nine. I think it's important for order and members of the council to know that eighteen families living on the street, streets and president, none of us, either individually or collectively, own the roads that we live on. The road going from Boulevard upward is a pink hill. It's the bottom of the hill. The bottom of the hill is about a hundred and eighty degrees. It faces north. That's our problem. When it snows, it turns to ice and it doesn't melt because there's no sun. The consequence is, is extremely, extremely dangerous. The bus cannot go up that street. The children range from, well, we have one baby that's gonna be one and it, and people go all the way up to ninety-eight years old. There's no way down the hill except walking for the children standing at the bottom of the hill, waiting for the bus. One of our members come was at the bottom of the hill with his car and his daughter. When the car came down the hill, totally lost control. I mean, first went alone fast or anything. He grabbed the children, put them in the car, or else they would've been dead. That's our problem. We're not asking for a street, we're not, only asking to please plow and sand our danger and danger situation. That's, that's all we're asking. Yep, anybody else? Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Leo Perry. I live on Blueberry Lane. I've lived there for...
Twenty-nine years?
Twenty-nine years. The mayor's taught my son before he was mayor.
Fine young lad, I might add.
And I've fought this onward of twenty-nine years. The street is not owned by anybody, as the woman here before me has said, and I've struggled with the fact that, held my breath to the fact that one morning I'm gonna wake up and hear the news that someone's gonna be dead at the bottom of Kenmere. I don't live on Kenmere. I think that Kenmere should be a situation that doesn't need an ad hoc committee, that should be taken care of directly. I've talked to people, I've talked to highway department people who say that they should have a, if they're, because Kenmere is used as a access way to the condominiums who invented fire, and they've told me in the past, oh, well, when they invent a fire, we'll send a plow up in front of the fire truck. I'm sure that if I was living in condos, I'd like to know that they'd have to wait for a plow to get out there before the fire truck can get up the hill to put out my fire. Okay? Something's gotta be done, okay? And as far as ownership, no one owns it because I have a quick claim deed here from George Davon who, the association, once the condos were built, a quick claim did back to George Davon who was the builder, and then he passed on, God rest his soul, and his corporation is now defunct, so no one owns it. And I guess no one can own it according to this quick claim deed. And the way it's written, I guess nobody can own it. And it's legal, but it's not right, and something should be done.
Neil, do you wanna, is that a copy or...
Yeah, but I'm not gonna give it to you because I'll never see it again. You're a copy.
Anybody else like to discuss our copying procedures here?
Don't try anything fancy. My name is Jared Borcat. I live on Huckleberry Lane. And first of all, thank you for the opportunity to address you, but I just wanted to relay a personal story that, you know, that is a very, very dangerous area where I personally have almost run children over. I'm a very good driver, have a stellar driving record, and yet, going down that hill, no matter how slowly you go, sometimes you cannot control the car. Last year, my wife and my niggas back there, six months pregnant and couldn't get up the hill, so she had to get out of her car, was not able to get any assistance in terms of getting up the hill and eventually, you know, had to walk up the hill. And by the time she got back to the car, this is at a time when I was out of town, she had realized that one of the plows had come along, I guess, Kenmere and basically snowed the car in. So, not a very good situation, and had it been plowed or had there been sand, you know, on the road, she would've been able to get up there. So, it's not only a safety hazard for people standing at the bottom, but also for those who are caught.
Any other member of the public wish to address the council this evening? Yes, sir.
Hello, everyone. My name is Pearl Pacific. I live on Sixth Blueberry Lane. I've lived in Danbury for five years. I've always lived in Buffalo and I love Danbury. And I live on, I go up and down that hill, and I have to go to doctors every week, and that hill is very bad. My son and I, coming up the hill, we went sideways down the hill, a car almost flipped over. And it, believe me, it's really bad. My brother-in-law and I have been buying sand, which isn't, I mean, salt, which isn't right because we don't own the road, and we've been putting salt down there and we just can't keep it up. It gets very expensive and we would appreciate somebody's help. And if I can also say something else, we, we live on Blueberry Lane, there are three Blueberry Lanes in Danbury. Now, that is a, that, I know that is another issue, but something needs to be done because when, my husband had died this year, last year, and I called and I said, I live on Sixth Blueberry Lane off of Kenmere Boulevard, and they knew exactly where to come. But you have to say that because there's two other Blueberry Lanes and we're, we're getting everybody's mail in. My son has to run packages over to other Blueberry Lanes and it's just not right. So, if you could please do something about it, we would all love it. Thank you very much.
Sir, your hand was up?
My name is Charles Madder. I live on Eighth Blueberry Lane. That's M-A-D-D-A-R-E. I lived on Blueberry Lane from seventy-four, nineteen seventy-four. Experienced, a lot of interesting experiences. Not to take up the council's time, I'm just gonna mention two since you've been mayor. I came down to pay my taxes one day and I slid down the road. A gentleman coming on my side of the car, he's on my left, he almost plowed into me. His face turned white. I'm surprised I'm still standing. Look. One night, I came home after work, I got halfway up, it was black ice. I got out of the car, I was gonna, because I had some sand in the trunk. I touched the car, started going backwards. I jumped in. I couldn't stop it. I was inside the car, slid on Boulevard Drive. I moved the car for safety because it's flat. Within three minutes, the city of Danbury, the old trucks for sanding and plowing plowed by. I thank God to this day that blade on that truck didn't roll my car over. Is it a dangerous situation? Yes, it is. If you appoint a committee, I'll be happy to show them just how dangerous. One thing is, when you come down the hill, Boulevard Drive, there's a curve and it kind of slopes down, which means it's a blind spot. So, if somebody's racing, going fast, you don't stand a chance. It's a very dangerous situation. Thank you for your time.
I live in five Blueberry Lane and I have two small children. So, this, this winter, when I went with my little one, who was three at that time, I'm going down the hill and I'm putting my car on one and the brake all the way down. I lost control completely of the car and I'm going down like this. So, my point is, at the same time that the plowing problem and cleaning the road is a problem for us because we live in that street, is another issue. Across that is the condominium, so if we lose control completely, we're gonna end up one day hitting somebody's house and whoever is sleeping or waking up or doing their daily things. Another thing, the road that goes across, they don't have a stop sign, so if we lose control because these trees in between, nobody could see us, so somebody else could end up dead. Thank you very much.
Any other folks from the Kenmere area wanna address the council? Mrs. Law? Okay, Jen, sir.
My name is Anthony John. I'm also a resident of Blueberry Lane. I don't want just to repeat what everybody has said before. I just wanna talk about one issue that's very dear to me. My mom is eighty years old and every morning at seven o'clock, she gets picked up by Almo's Homes with Van. And we've been living with this problem on Blueberry Lane for a long time, but it's always, always a problem. But now, the van comes in and they bring other people's parents up our street to pick up my mom. Many times, the van cannot make it up the hill. They have to call the other house. I have to dress my mom, either walk through the woods and bring it down to the bottom of the street, or get in the car and creep down if the wind come up in the van. And every time, we have different drivers. Sometimes the drivers, a new driver comes, doesn't know the situation, when the hell he comes up, can't comes back down because he has to creep up into the van to come down. It's a very, very dangerous situation, especially for the seniors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Law.
I'll be short. I wanted to talk to you about item number fourteen, which is the senior program for the energy assistance program, which I think is excellent, and I hope you go forward with it and order to help the seniors. I think it's a wonderful idea. And the other item is number thirty-three, which deals with the ad hoc committee for the unit to allow them to issue tickets for parking. Any inner-city neighborhood is full of cars parking in the wrong places, and if you allow someone else besides just police officers to ticket, I think that would be wonderful or zoning who are not on at night. Most of the cars parking are in the middle of the night. You can't get up and down the streets. Plows have trouble getting up and down the streets, and if we can get some tickets and wake people up to what's going on, I think that's wonderful. And I want to thank you all for your support. I have already changed all my lights to fluorescent. Thank you.
Any other member of the public wish to, we have time for one more speaker.
My name's John Woodruff. W-O-O-D-R-U-F-F. I'm at nine Madison Avenue in Danbury. Speak about number fifty-one on the agenda, which is, I don't know how to, parade, it's an ad hoc committee regarding a parade ordinance. And the first thing I'd like to point out, both on the ad hoc report and I think in the agenda for tonight's meeting, the first one is only a parade ordinance, which I think is somewhat misleading following, it doesn't just cover parades, it covers parades and public assemblies. And there's a lot of language in this, if you're not familiar with it. I would acknowledge that, first, the ad hoc committee has met a few times, done some work that I've been trying to follow as far as revising things. So, if you want to acknowledge that. Having stood out in here as both a United States citizen and also as an active, involved member of my union, so I haven't talked about that. I think this still needs more work before this is ready to go to a public hearing. For people that are not familiar, it covers public assemblies as well as parades, people more than twenty-five persons, picket lines, rallies, and no public assembly at all will be allowed without a permit. Now, if we recall, and Mr. Mayor, I'm sure you know, Congress should make no law abridging the right of people to peaceably assemble. I think this abridges our rights as citizens, so I'd like that to be looked at and addressed. And also, as a union member, we've used this right before. I worked for and represented custodians in the Board of Ed, and we were faced with job cut, union brothers put out of work, we rallied around City Hall, which some of the council people, the mayor attended. Our sisters and brothers in the police department, when they had trouble coming to terms with the contract, they picketed around City Hall. We joined them proudly in that. In that case in particular, I think it'd be problematical for those sisters and brothers in the police department to apply to police chief, and I'm not sure the police chief would want them to have to apply, and for him to make a decision whether or not that involves their right, their First Amendment rights to free speech. And also, sisters and brothers that I work very closely with in our local teachers' union, NEA, and Mr. Mayor, proud member of, I've used that around their Keep the Promise rallies, all right, to get the proper funding from our state government to make sure that they have an adequate retirement. So, there's a lot of issues there that still need to be addressed. To my way of thinking, the cleanest way to do it, and just so, I've talked to a lot of people about this. One, first of all, they think it only has to do with the soccer celebrations, right, and the immigrants in the streets. So, once I clear them up on that, they say, well, it just covers parades, period. And no one is opposed to that. We need something covering these kind of parades that shut down the city streets that are planned well ahead of time. But any kind of spontaneous gathering of people for their First Amendment rights, I think needs just, any reference to public assembly, all right, and any abridgement of that rights, I think should be struck from this proposed ordinance. I don't know the will of the council, if it's something that's appropriate to send back to this ad hoc committee for more work. As an advocate for good government, I think that's the best route to go, and that's what I would suggest. I would suggest. As a union organizer, I would like to see and send to a public hearing so we can organize a good protest, whenever that is. But I guess I'll leave that up to you. I'll tell you this, from my own point of view, and I've talked with a lot of folks, particularly my union sisters and brothers, if this goes through, and we need to picket a route, we're not going to apply. And we'll let you know that right ahead of time. We're going to go ahead and do it. We'll face the fine, there's a provision for a fine. We'll not pay the fine, we'll do what we have, because, you know, we think that's an important right that we need to protect, and we're asking the council to help us protect that right. Thank you.
(applause)
That concludes the public speaking portion of our meeting this evening. There are several events that are on the dais for our council members to peruse. There are actually a couple of birthdays and wedding anniversaries. February first was Joe Cabo's birthday. Congratulations, Mr. President. Happy birthday to you. And Valentine's Day, February fourteenth, is Charlie and Lisa Trembetta's wedding anniversary. In addition to that, there's some other events that are listed on the calendar. Specifically, remember the main ceremony is on the corner of West and Division Streets at seven P.M. City offices will be closed on both February twelfth and February nineteenth and on our President's Day. There also will be a twenty-fifth anniversary Melody Hallis memorial service. That's a nude mass at St. Peter's Church. We'd like to get as much attendance from the council at that mass as we can, and then a service at two P.M. at the fire department headquarters. In addition to that, there's other events that are happening throughout the month. Feel free to contact when you queue into costume my office if you have any questions or want to know best time to attend any event. That concludes our public announcements for the evening. Mr. President, the minutes, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the reading of the minutes, as all members have copies and copies are on file in the city clerk's office.
Motion's been made and seconded by Councilman Johnson. Any corrections, deletions, or additions to the minutes as presented? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, acceptance of the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Majority Leader, the consent calendar, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The consent calendar for February sixth, two thousand and seven. Four, receive the communication and confirm the appointment of Joel B. Uris as a member of the Planning Commission for a term to expire on January first, two thousand and ten. And file Sermiara as an alternate member of the Planning Commission with a term to expire on January first, two thousand and eight. Five, receive the communication and confirm the reappointment to the Terry Wild Park Authority of Gerald Davis, Ted Kostumpis, oh, John Daly, Gerald Daly.
Hope he's not John Daly, doesn't hit the ball that far.
Gerald Daly, Ted Kostumpis, and Merida Repole with terms to expire on January first, two thousand and twelve. Barbara Tellerico, David Cook, and Michael Marcus with terms to expire January first, two thousand and nine. And Michael Lombardi with a term to expire on January first, two thousand and eight. Six, receive the communication and confirm the reappointment of John Hofer and Edward Moore to the Danbury Library Board of Directors with terms to expire on January first, two thousand and ten. Seven, receive the communication and confirm the appointment to the Stanley Lasker Richter Memorial Park Authority of Leonard J. Caganello and Christine L. Moreno with terms to expire on February first, two thousand and ten. And Leroy D. Diggs with a term to expire on February first, two thousand and nine. And Felix Minacci as an alternative member with a term to expire on January, on February first, two thousand and nine. I'm still on January. Eight, receive the communication and confirm the appointments of Michael Serfannic and Paul Estefan as alarm systems hearing officers with terms to expire on February first, two thousand and nine, and as citation hearing officers with term to expire on February first, two thousand and nine. Nine, receive the communication and confirm the appointment of Anthony Parisi as an alternative member of the Fair Rent Commission with a term to expire on January, oh, God, with a term to expire on July first, two thousand and nine. Ten, receive the communication and confirm the reappointment of Judith Betman Coco as a member of the Youth Commission with a term to expire on June first, two thousand and nine, and confirm the appointment of Samantha Krasinski and Evan Lunt as youth advisors to the Youth Commission. Eleven, receive the communication and approve the funding of professional services required to complete the preliminary task related to the updating, update of the plan of conservation and development in the amount of forty thousand dollars pending certification with the, from the Director of Finance. Twenty-three, receive the communication and approve the appointment of McGladrey and Pollan LLP as auditors for the city audit for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and seven. Twenty-five, receive the communication and approve the transfer of funds in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars into the special, into the police special services account number two zero 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 dot five zero five two. Twenty-six, receive the communication and authorize the Danbury Fire Department to accept a foam attack trailer from the state of Connecticut. Twenty-seven, receive the communication and authorize the Fire Marshal's Office to apply for and accept a grant from the Connecticut Fair Plan Anti-Arsen Committee for funds to purchase a digital SLR camera and to approve the spending of an additional one hundred fifty dollars if the grant does not cover the entire price, pending certification by the Director of Finance. Forty, receive the communication and authorize, authorize Mayor Mark D. Bowden to execute the agreement for disposal of hazardous waste. Forty-one, receive the communication and approve the resolution authorizing Mayor Mark D. Bowden to apply for and apply and accept grant funding for the city of Danbury's Women Infant Children's Program. Forty-two, receive the communication, authorize Mayor Mark D. Bowden or the Director of Health, Housing, and Welfare to apply for and accept grant funds in the amount of ten thousand dollars from the General Mills Champions for Healthy Kids. Forty-three, receive the communication, authorize Mayor Mark D. Bowden to accept increased funding for the public health preparedness and a response planning grant in the amount of twenty-eight thousand five hundred dollars to be used exclusively for pandemic influenza planning. Twenty-five, receive the communication and approve the resolution authorizing the Corporation Council to acquire the properties described therein. Forty-eight, receive the report and approve the recommendation of the committee. Forty-nine, receive the report and approve the recommendation of the committee. Fifty, receive the report and take no action at this time. Fifty-one, receive the report and refer the proposed ordinance to public hearing. Fifty-two, receive the report and take no action at this time. Fifty-three, receive the report and approve the recommendation of the committee. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. What's your pleasure, counsel? Counselwoman Serracino.
Thank you, Your Honor. I make a motion that we accept the consent calendar as read.
Motion made and seconded by Councilman Cabo. Any discussion about the consent calendar? Councilwoman Tabersak.
Thank you, Your Honor. Was item forty-two on the consent calendar? I'm asking that that be removed.
Seeing no objection, is there any other discussion about the consent calendar? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item one, please.
Dear council members, I am pleased to submit for your confirmation appointment of Nicholas A. Kaplanis, twenty mark road, Danbury, to serve the city of Danbury as Director of Recreation. Nick is a native of Danbury and belongs to a history of community service and needs sports and a tireless advocate for recreational opportunities in Danbury. Mr. Kaplanis is a graduate of Danbury High School and earned a bachelor's of science in elementary education from Western Connecticut State University and a master's of business administration from the University of New Haven. He's scheduled to retire from his position of product market manager with Branson Ultrasonic Corporation prior to assuming his new position with the city of Danbury. Nick is an active member of the Danbury Athletic Youth Organization for the past twenty-five years and currently serves as day of number one vice president. A generation of Danbury youth was coached by Nick as he volunteered his services to the Danbury Trojans, Danbury Bambinos, and Danbury Women's Softball League. Nick is retiring from coaching to focus his energies in the position of the Danbury Recreation, Director of Recreation. Mr. Kaplanis is also an active member of the Assumption Greek Orthodox Church. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Sincerely, Mark D. Bowden, Mayor.
What's your pleasure, counsel? Councilwoman Trembetta.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm pleased to receive the communication and make a motion to confirm the appointment of Nicholas Kaplanis as Director of Recreation for the city of Danbury.
Motion made and seconded by Councilman Serracino. Any discussion about Mr. Kaplanis's appointment? Mr. Seaberry.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to take a moment. I've known Mr. Kaplanis for over thirty years, and I got to tell you, you've chosen a, nobody better for this position. I'm thrilled that you've put him forward.
Mr. Seaberry, further discussion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Nick. Stand to be recognized. Nick's start date will be first week in March, although we're going to give him a bunch of work in February already, so Antonio and I have a long list of things that we want to get cracking on. So, Nick, we look forward to working with you and God bless you as you start your career at the city of Danbury. Madam Clerk, item two, please.
Dear common council members, I am pleased to submit for your confirmation the appointment of Amy H. Budnick, thirty-four, Wilkes Road, Danbury, to serve as the city of Danbury, to serve the city of Danbury as Director of Welfare. Amy is a Danbury native with impeccable credentials in social services and community health. Ms. Budnick currently serves as the Women Infant and Children's Program Coordinator for the city of Danbury. She previously served as a WIC program nutritionist prior to her promotion from staff nutritionist position. She brings extensive experience to the community in community nutrition services and is a member of the Connecticut and American Diabetes Association. Amy earned a bachelor of science in nutritional sciences from the University of Connecticut College of Agricultural Culture and Natural Resources and a master of science in public nutrition from Case Western University. Our community is fortunate to have such a well-qualified candidate for this key position. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Sincerely, Mark D. Bowden, Mayor.
Thank you. What's your pleasure, counsel? Councilwoman Serracino.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion that we confirm the appointment of Amy H. Budnick to serve the city of Danbury as the Director of Welfare.
Motion made and seconded by Councilman Riley. Any discussion about Ms. Budnick's appointment? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor of her appointment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Motion passes nineteen to one. Amy, congratulations. Amy's done a terrific job with the WIC program and had to say I'm a little biased, she was my former student. She was a darn good student and graduated Danbury High School, so we know she's really going to add a lot of energy and talent to the welfare department, and we look forward to continue all the good work you're doing with the city of Danbury. Congratulations, Amy, to you and your family. Madam Clerk, item three, please.
Dear common council members, I am pleased to submit for your confirmation the appointment of Lieutenant Mark O'Masta, sixteen, Driftway Point Road in Danbury, to the position of drill master of the Danbury Fire Department. Lieutenant O'Masta is a Danbury native and joined the Danbury Fire Department in October nineteen eighty-five after serving five years as a firefighter in Will. Mark was promoted to lieutenant in June nineteen ninety-nine. Lieutenant O'Masta lives with his wife Valerie and daughter Krista. Mark owned and earned an associate's degree from Western Connecticut State University, a bachelor of arts degree from SUNY New Hope, and is certified, and is a certified EMT for. Lieutenant O'Masta is an active member and volunteer of St. Paul's Church and the Soco Club. I'm pleased to submit for your confirmation, Ms. Budnick.
What's your pleasure, counsel? Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Your Honor. It gives me great pleasure to make the motion to receive the communication and confirm the appointment of Lieutenant Mark O'Masta to drill master in the Danbury Fire Department.
Motion made and seconded by Councilman Cabo. Any discussion about Lieutenant's, O'Masta's promotion to drill master? Anybody want to use him at all? No? Seeing, we'll talk later. Seeing none, then I'll try your minds on his appointment. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Mark, congratulations. Mark has a long history with the Danbury Fire Department. His family has a long history of firefighting in the city, and I know he looks forward to serving our department as it goes through some transition and changes with Engine Twenty-Six opening and new staff coming on. He's going to have his hands full, and I know he looks forward to it. Mark, you want to introduce your family? Is your family in here?
My wife Valerie, my daughter's at Steve Race's Huntington for Danbury High, probably freezing. My mom's dodging hurricanes down in Florida right now. And my current chief, Mr. Chief Steve Leo, who's one of the responsible for taking the promotion exam. I finally had to take an exam, but he wouldn't take it.
Always good competition.
All my brother, my brother's.
Valerie, thank you. Continue.
I'm pleased to submit for your confirmation the appointment of firefighter Mark L. Miguel, six, Rockwood Lane, Danbury, to the position of lieutenant of the Danbury Fire Department. Mark is a Danbury native and a graduate of Henry Abbott Technical School. He served in the U.S. Navy CDs and joined the Danbury Fire Department in nineteen, January nineteen ninety-six. A former volunteer firefighter, Citizen Host Company Number Six, Mark has received two-unit citations, two awards, awards for merit, and an honorable service award. Firefighter Miguel is a member of the St. Paul's Church. He serves as a volunteer in Maricar's and coaches youth basketball. Mark lives with his wife Linda and their three children, Ryan, Carissa, and Joey. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Sincerely, Mark D. Bowden, Mayor.
Ms. Stanley.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm excited and honored to make the motion to receive the communication and confirm the appointment of firefighter Mark Miguel to the position of lieutenant for the city of Danbury. Congratulations.
Motion made and seconded by Councilwoman Bassel. Any discussion about Mark Miguel's promotion to lieutenant? I don't see too much Cabo was ready with something, but I wasn't sure about that. Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Mark, congratulations. Lieutenant, why don't you introduce your family?
I brought with me my wife Linda, my son Ryan, my son Joey, my daughter Carissa, my grandmother Vivian, and my in-laws, Barbara of George Rees, and then all my brothers are.
Congratulations. Best to you, and you did a fantastic job in interview process, and this is a promotion I learned, so good luck to you and God bless you. Items four through eleven were consent. Madam Clerk, item twelve, please.
Dear common council members, I am running to you to ask your support for an important project to honor our veterans. I propose the city of Danbury erect a new Civil War monument to honor over sixty African-American men from the greater Danbury area who fought to preserve the Union during the Civil War, eighteen sixty-one to eighteen sixty-five. I ask your approval of spending four thousand dollars for this monument project. It is our hope that this monument will serve to educate the public of the important individual who served our country during the Civil War and to celebrate a rich African-American heritage in our community with a legacy of overcoming challenges for freedom. This monument will be constructed of Indian black granite from Elberton, Georgia, and will consist of an image of the Grand Army of the Republic medal and an inscription declaring the monument's purpose. The G.A.R. was a fraternal organization composed of veterans of the Union Army who had served in the American Civil War. The monument will stand on land across, land at Worcester Cemetery donated by the Danbury Cemetery Association across from General Worcester Monument. across from General Worcester Monument. The Danbury Cemetery Association hopes this will be the first of several monuments over the next few years honoring Civil War regiments raised in the Danbury area. A dedication ceremony is planned for the 2007 Memorial Day weekend. Sincerely, Mark D. Valmont, Mayor.
Thank you. It's a pleasure, Council. Councilman Riley.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the item number twelve, to receive the communication and approve the funding of $4,000 toward the building of the African-American Civil War Monument pending certification by the Director of Finance.
This is made and seconded by Councilman Johnson. Is there any discussion about this initiative? Mr. Riley.
Thank you, Your Honor, again. It's most appropriate that this item regarding a monument for those African-Americans that served so honorably during the Civil War should come to vote during this month of February, that is traditionally African-American History Month. The first African-American regiment was formed in Massachusetts around late 1863. That was the 54th Massachusetts Regiment. By 1864 and 1865, this particular regiment had been moved into the Carolinas, and as they came down from Massachusetts, many of our free African-Americans living in the Danbury area were brought into their ranks. Eventually, they went on and served in many bloody campaigns, having casualty rates of over fifty percent. It is altogether fitting that we, at this time, even though late in years, that we honor their memory and dedicate this monument to their heroic efforts and their sacrifice that they made during the Civil War. Thank you very much.
Mr. Riley, well said. Any further discussion about this initiative? Mr. Visconti.
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, I'd like to thank the Worcester Cemetery Board of Directors for the donation of the land. The only question I have is, Director of Finance, if I may, where the $4,000 would be coming from?
Our contingency.
I'm sorry?
Contingency.
Thank you. No further questions.
Mr. Visconti, further discussion? Mr. Perkins.
Outside of the donation of the Danbury Cemetery Association, is there any particular reason why this monument can't be located at the memorial center?
We did approach the association, and there's a pretty strong feeling that this project, which we did initiate with them, and they did a lot of research in conjunction with the Danbury Museum and Historical Society to actually identify by name all of those soldiers and sailors from the greater Danbury area that participated in these various military campaigns. They felt very strongly that it'd be located at Worcester Cemetery for a variety of reasons. One, there are a number of soldiers who are laid to rest there who are listed on the monument. Two, they're creating a Civil War monument area of not just, this is their first really project out of, but in the future, there'll be other groups and individuals that they'll recognize related to the Civil War specifically in that area. This will be sort of the cornerstone and the lead project, if you will, in that particular area. And that was the feeling about it. We did suggest at one point that we might wanna do that, but given the fact that there's gonna be other Civil War monuments that will be around that, recognizing other individuals and groups of individuals, they felt very strongly that it'd be located at Worcester Cemetery.
Mrs. Taverzak.
Your Honor, would you put on your social studies hat and tell us, I believe General Worcester is a revolutionary general. He's not associated with the Civil War, is he?
No, he's not.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item thirteen, please.
Communication, keep Danbury Beautiful Campaign.
It's a pleasure, Council. Councilwoman Tyseult, it's good to see you back. You're looking sharp.
Good to be back. Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to an ad hoc committee with the Department of Public Works, Corporation Council, a representative from the mayor's office, and a representative from the unit.
Ad-hoc committee shall consist of the following: Councilwoman Stanley, Councilwoman Bassel, and Councilwoman Visconti. Madam Clerk, item fourteen, please.
Communication, request for ad hoc committee, senior energy assistance program.
It's a pleasure, Council. Councilwoman McMahon.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to an ad hoc committee with Corporation Council, the Director of Finance, and the Tax Collective.
Ad-hoc committee shall consist of the following: Councilman Trembetta, Councilwoman Negerscheth, and Councilman Perkins. Madam Clerk, item fifteen, please.
Communication, request for ad hoc committee, clean energy.
It's a pleasure, Council. Councilman Kusumpis.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to an ad hoc committee consisting of the superintendent of public buildings, Director of Finance, and Corporation Council.
Ad-hoc committee shall consist of the following: Councilman Negerscheth, Councilman Calendrino, and Councilman Espizito. Madam Clerk, item sixteen, please.
Request to accept donation. I request permission to accept the donation of a conference table, twelve chairs, and a blackboard from Union Savings Bank. Union Savings Bank has declared these items surplus and wishes them to go to a government agency. We will use them to replace the thirty-five-year-old equipment presently in our conference room. Alan D. Baker, Chief of Police.
It's a pleasure, Council. It's a pleasure, Council. Councilman Johnson, yes? Councilman Johnson, yep?
I'd like to make a motion that we receive the communication and accept the donation and send a letter of thanks.
Motion made and seconded by Councilman Cabo. Is there any discussion about the donation? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item seventeen, please.
Request to accept donation. Permission is requested to accept a donation of $500 from one of the DARE fifth-grade classes at the Great Plains School for a purchase of a ballistic vest and related equipment for police officer Antonelli's K-9 Britta. The students raised the money so that Britta could have protective gear while working in the field. Alan D. Baker, please.
It's a pleasure, Council. Councilman Cabo.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just time I'd like to make a motion that we receive the communication and accept the generous donation from the DARE fifth-grade class at Great Plains School and send the appropriate letters of thanks.
Motion made and seconded by Councilwoman McMahon. Is there any discussion about the donation? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item nineteen.
Donation of furniture from Dow Chemical Union Carbide. Dear Mayor Bowden and members of the common council, the Public Buildings Department has received a donation from Dow Chemical Union Carbide at Danbury, Connecticut. This donation consists of various desks, chairs, file cabinets, and conference tables. These will be used in city buildings based upon need. I request this generous donation to be accepted at the next common council meeting.
It's a pleasure, Council. Dr. Negerscheth.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive this communication, accept the generous donation of the furniture, and send the appropriate letters of thanks.
Motion made and seconded by Councilman Sheenisi.
Sure.
Okay. Any discussion about the donation? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item nineteen, please.
Dear Mayor Bowden, the Danbury Library has received a donation from Dale W. Brown, 116 Loggins Road, Danbury, in the amount of $100. Please place this item on the agenda for the February common council meeting, as this donation needs to be deposited into the library fund donation. Sincerely, Mark D. Pescar.
It's a pleasure, Council. Councilman Seaberry.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to accept the correspondence and to also accept the donation and send a letter of thanks and have this deposited into the library fund, point 4651 donations.
This one was definitely seconded by Councilman Sheenisi. Any discussion about the donation? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item twenty, please.
Joe Cabo, President, Common Council, members of the common council, resign donations to Welfare Social Service Department. The Welfare Social Services Department received a total of $1,025 in gift cards in denominations ranging from $10 to $25. The gift cards were to various local businesses in the communities, such as pharmacies, gas stations, clothing stores, as well as large food markets, not to mention stores in the mall. The DARE Center at the City of Danbury Emergency Shelter received a total of $915 in gift cards to be used for the needs of the population served through programs offered through the homeless services division of the Welfare Services Department. The emergency shelter of the homeless services division received a total of $750 in gift cards to Sears in denominations of $50 to be used for people, the nighttime services program. Dorothy Day Hospitality House has received a large donation of gift cards from a donor and shared half their donations with the city shelter. A complete list of individuals and organizations that made these donations, too numerous to mention here, can be obtained at the Welfare Social Services Department, 354 Main Street. Copies of individual thank you letters prepared and sent by the staff have been forwarded to Mayor Bowden, as has been done in the past. I'm requesting that the council accept these donations gratefully received from a generous and caring community of people, some of who are in city employees, past and present, state employees, as well as members of the common council. Thank you. Patricia A. Bowen, Director of Welfare Social.
It's a pleasure, Council. Councilwoman Stanley.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication and accept the donations as listed and send appropriate letters of thanks.
Second.
This is made and seconded by Councilwoman Taverzak. Is there any discussion about the donations? Mrs. Taverzak.
Your Honor, it looks as though we don't have to send letters of thanks, they already be on your desk.
We'd certainly be happy to send those out, and certainly the council also likes to send their letters, so we'll send out two letters. Can't thank people enough for all the donations to our wonderful city departments. Any further discussion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. And I just wanna mention briefly that Patricia Bowen has officially retired as of the 31st. Patricia, I want to congratulate you and thank you for all you've done for the city. We had a very good party the other night. Yes. Madam Clerk, item twenty-one, please.
Donations from Bowdenburg, Engleheim. Pursuant to the attached correspondence from Bowdenburg, Engleheim, I am requesting that the common council accept the donation of $911 and appropriate the funds as follows. Fire Department needs equipment, $455.50. Police Department, office supplies, $455.50.
It's a pleasure, Council. Mr. Kusumpis.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication and accept a donation of $911 from Bowdenburg.
This is made and seconded by Councilwoman Diggs. Is that Councilwoman Tyseult? Councilwoman Tyseult, any discussion about the donation? Mrs. Taverzak.
Thank you, Your Honor. Really, a point of information, it's like the wheels have fallen off the bus since Gene Natelli's been injured, but I didn't have any correspondence from Bowdenburg, Engleheim that this donation refers to. Is it not in the packet?
I'm not sure if it is. This is the 9/11 ceremony. Generally, we don't put the packet for it. This is the officers and firefighters.
I'm simply pointing out, it says pursuant to the attached correspondence from Bowdenburg, Engleheim. And that without Gene, we need to really make sure everything that needs to be in the packet gets in there.
Thank you, Council. We'll check into that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item twenty-two, please.
Dear Mayor Bowden and members of the common council, the Department of Elderly Services has received the following donations for performances by both the cellmates, which is the senior citizen band and the senior center chorus, from the following: the Danbury Common Tenants Organization, $25; the Gardens, $25; Tandewood Valley Health and Rehab, $25; Danbury Healthcare, $25. Please accept these donations and transfer the above $100 into line item 5002-5601, office supplies. Also, Girl Scout Troop 826, under the leadership of Sharon Lauai and Joanne Falan, donated eighty-eight boxes of Girl Scout cookies to Elmwood Hall, valued at $308. We are grateful for this donation and ask that the council accept it at its meeting today. Thank you respectfully, Susan M. Tomano, Director of Elderly Services.
It's a pleasure, Council. Councilwoman Bassel.
Yes, Your Honor. Okay, I'd like to receive the communication and accept the donation of $100 to be put into a line item 5002-5601 for office supplies, and I'd also like to accept the donation of eighty-eight boxes of Girl Scout cookies from Girl Scout Troop 826, and send the appropriate letters of thank you.
This is made and seconded by Councilwoman Negerscheth. Any discussion about the donation to the senior center? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Item twenty-three was on consent. Madam Clerk, item twenty-four, please.
Communication, certification of funds, Dream Homes Community Center.
It's a pleasure, Council. Councilwoman Saraceno.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to an ad hoc committee with Corporation Council, Director of Finance personnel, the Chairperson of the Task Force on Homelessness, Ms. Diane Yaman, and a representative from Dream Homes.
Ad-hoc committee shall consist of the following: Councilwoman Saraceno, Councilwoman Tyseult, and Councilman Perkins. Items 25 through 27 were consent. Item 28 was withdrawn. Madam Clerk, item 29, please.
Communication, accepted of Kenmere Boulevard, Huckleberry Lane, and Blueberry Lane as city roads.
It's a pleasure, Council. Councilwoman Diggs.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to make the referral to send to an ad hoc committee with Director of Planning, Department of Public Works, and a report from planning.
Ad-hoc committee shall consist of the following: Councilman Seaberry, Councilman Johnson, and Councilman Sadi.
A point of information, Your Honor, regarding item number 29. The purpose, again, the request for item number 29 is for authorized Corporation Council to look into this matter, not for an ad hoc committee. So my information is what with the ad hoc committee doing.
At this point, that will be a discussion for the ad hoc committee to take up, but I just wanna remind you of our code of ordinances. I think it's section 25, that any member, except by unanimous consent, can refer an item to ad hoc committee. It's been referred, it's been appointed, so we'll move on to the next item.
Certainly. You make an addition to Corporation Council, I put it in that at the end. Item thirty.
Communication, request for ad hoc committee, ten-year plan to end homelessness.
It's a pleasure, Council. Councilman Riley.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to send item thirty to an ad hoc committee, including Director of Finance, Corporation Council, Pro Bay Judge, Representative Green Homes, Representative Housing Partnership, Director and the Director of Health and Housing and Welfare Departments. Thank you.
Ad-hoc committee shall consist of the following: Councilwoman Saraceno, Councilwoman Tyseult, Councilman Perkins. Madam Clerk, item thirty-one, please.
Communication, request for ad hoc committee, sewer and water connection, please.
It's a pleasure, Council.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to send this to an ad hoc committee, Director of Public Works, Director of Finance, Corporation Council.
Ad-hoc committee shall consist of the following: Councilwoman Saraceno, Councilwoman Tyseult, and Councilman Perkins. Madam Clerk, item thirty-two, please.
Communication, request for ad hoc committee, amend child's rights authority.
It's a pleasure, Council. Councilman Trembetta.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to receive the communication and request an ad hoc committee with Corporation Council.
Ad-hoc committee shall consist of the following: Councilwoman Kusumpis, Councilwoman Diggs, Councilwoman Otella. Madam Clerk, item thirty-three, please.
Communication, request for ad hoc committee, illegally parked cars.
It's a pleasure, Council. Councilwoman McMahon.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to Corporation Council for thirty-day report.
Ms. Jackson, this is ordered. Item thirty-four. Ms. James, this is ordered.
I have a question on item thirty-three. I'd like to send that to an ad hoc committee as presented in the request with Corporation Counsel, along with a thirty-day report.
And our commission consists of the following: Councilwoman Calhoun, Councilwoman Bassow, and Councilman Perkins. Item thirty-four, please.
Communication, request for ad hoc committee, first night, Danbury, 2007.
Pleasure, Council. Ms. Diggs?
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to make the referral to send to an ad hoc committee with Director of Finance and Representatives from the city center.
And our commission consists of the following: Councilwoman Diggs, Councilwoman Casupis, Councilwoman Otella.
Item thirty-five, please.
Communication, rescind BRT tax assessment to Flore Crosby Street.
Pleasure, Council.
Ms. Calhoun? Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to Corporation Counsel for a fifty-day report. Ms. Jackson, this is ordered.
Item thirty-six, please.
Communication, request for impact statement.
Pleasure, Council. Ms. McManus?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to send this to the planning director for a thirty-day report.
Ms. Jackson, this is ordered. Ms. James?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion on that to actually send this to the mayor's office for implementation, and not to the planning commission for a report.
The motion is ordered, Ms. James. Item thirty-seven, please.
WIC Communities Easement Over Property, City of Danbury. Dear Mr. Carver, please be advised, I represent WIC Communities Incorporated. With respect to certain portions of the development known as the Rivington at the Reserve, the City of Danbury is, the City of Danbury is the owner of a 13.125 acre of land located on the corner of Obridge Bay Road and Reserve Road, which is a parcel originally, originally was part of the complex, but was conveyed to the city. Currently located on the city property are three electrical switches. These switch, these switching mechanism will be part of the overall electrical distribution system within the reserve. Connecticut Light and Power Company is requiring that an easement be created around the electrical switching mechanism, and said easement to be transferred to CLP. WIC Communities, Inc., hereby request that the City of Danbury execute an easement over the portion of the property shown on the attached map. Thank you for your consideration. Very truly yours, Paul N. Jaber.
Pleasure, Council. Ms. Calhoun?
Thank you, Your Honor. Pending a positive recommendation from planning, I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication, receive the communication and grant the easement as requested.
Ayes, having motion carries unanimously. All opposed, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes, having motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item thirty-eight, please.
Communication, request for sewer and water, Stacy Road and Route 37.
Pleasure, Council. Ms. Trumbett?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to receive the communication and refer this to an ad hoc committee consisting of Director of Public Works as well as planning department.
And our commission consists of the following: Councilwoman Riley, Councilwoman McManus, Councilwoman Sadi.
Item thirty-nine, please.
Communication, request for water, 109 Park Avenue.
Pleasure, Council. Ms. Calhoun?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to receive the communication and send this to an ad hoc committee with the Director of Public Works and a report from planning.
And our commission consists of the following: Councilwoman Riley, Councilwoman McManus, Councilwoman Sadi. Item forty, item forty-one, forty-two, or, excuse me. Forty-one, I'm consenting. Item thirty.
Attached for your review is a resolution that would allow the City of Danbury Housing and Welfare Department to apply for a competitive grant from the General Mills Corporation. This grant in the amount of $10,000 would cover June 2007 through May 2008, and will focus on helping students make healthier life choices. There is no local match required. The common council is requesting to consider this resolution at its next meeting.
Pleasure, Council. Ms. Calhoun?
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a motion that we receive the communication, adopt the resolution, authorizing Mayor Mark D. Bowden or the Director of the Health, Housing and Welfare to apply for and accept grant funds in the amount of $10,000 from the General Mills Champions for Healthy Kids.
Seconded by Councilwoman Bassow. Any discussion? Ms. Taberzak?
Thank you, Your Honor. Question through you to whoever might be able to answer it. Was the Danbury Board of Education, were the Danbury Public Schools involved in considering this particular grant application? Is it done with their knowledge, their agreement, their support?
Yes, Melanie Bonjour and the new employees of the School Based Health Center contacted the principal, and they fully support the proposal. They're looking forward to it. They're quite energetic, and the new employees really want to go with this grant, and hopefully we do it there.
Melanie Bonjour, is she an employee of the Danbury Public Schools?
An employee of the Health Department. She's administrator of the School Based Health Center.
So she's, and the principal of the school is?
Robbs.
And Mr. Robbs is in support of this program?
Yeah.
You're certain?
Melanie wouldn't have proposed that without going forward with Ed Robbs.
And was there any contact through you, Your Honor, with the Danbury Board of Education or with the Superintendent's Office about this grant?
I'm not aware of it. Being with the Board of Education, School Based Health Centers are managed and operated and funded through our Health Department, and have such a grand, given credit by the Health Department, probably supposedly part of the Board of Education.
I guess what I'm concerned about, I know that the school board has a contract with SEDEXO, and they have a nutritionist, and I wonder if we're stepping on their toes. I would really like to have seen this be fully vetted by the Danbury Public Schools. It's great to haul in 10,000 bucks, but it's also great to check it through all the channels of people who will be affected by it, and I don't think that's been done.
Well, if I can clarify.
Certainly.
The timeframe is such where the, like, we have to apply by tomorrow. We found out about this through Amy's efforts very recently. This is application to apply. Obviously, for accepting the money, Melanie's going to have to go forward and hash out all the details as well. So this is merely approval to apply, does not mean we're going to obtain it.
So there was no time to really fully vet this with the Superintendent's Office?
No, I believe that it's probably fully vetted in the idea that they want to promote a healthy environment for children, and if the money's obtained, obviously those channels will be going through. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. As a, as a comment, I'd just like to say that as a former principal and teacher for many years within the Danbury school system, the, the School Based Health Program that we have here in Danbury is a very wonderful program. They work in conjunction with all the principals, the assistant principals, and, and the junior high schools, especially Broadview, Rogers Park, and of course, Danbury High School. And anytime that there's a opportunity for the School Based Health to receive, especially a grant like this, that is very positive, well, that's a very good thing, because the School Based Health Program has, has worked hard in the last 10 years to get to where it is today, because many, many years ago, it was not funded the way that it should be. And so, anything that can be received at a short notice should be received with open arms, because I can guarantee you that there's not a principal in this system, the Danbury school system, that does not know about the different grants that are out there. So I would, would like to see that we would certainly endorse this and vote yes on this item at once, so that Scott can go ahead and make sure that we do receive the funds. Thank you very much.
Ms. Riley, Ms. McDonald?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a brief comment. Obesity amongst kids today is a, I hate to use the phrase, but it's a growing concern. If a corporation like General Motors was willing to give us $10,000 in an unrestricted grant to attack that, I would be all for it, but a corporation like General Mills, whose stockholders have a vested interest in selling more General Mills products, which include highly salted, highly fat, highly sugared snack food, it's something that I would, I would be concerned about. There's a, a line here in one of the paragraphs about how they're going to use passive and active teaching or learning techniques with a captive audience of little children at, at the middle school, and I, I would be more comfortable going over the learning material before allowing a program like this to, to proceed. I know we had issues with the Coca-Cola machines in the high school, the citizens banned those, and I'm not casting this versus a General Mills, like, this could be unrestricted. They could be teaching kids to eat sunflower seeds and lettuce. I don't know, but I haven't seen the material, and I would be a little uncomfortable voting for it, notwithstanding the fact that we need the money. I'm a little leery of the, of the, of the closeness between this particular corporation and the type of grant. Thank you.
Ms. McDonald, further discussion? Ms. Lee, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess my question's for Scott Marrow.
Well, I agree with Councilwoman Taberzak's concern, but it appears that the school board was not properly notified in depth of this grant, but I know the time constraints is tomorrow. But if you do apply and it get approved with, with the grant, can you still deny the grant? Do you have to accept the money at that point?
No.
So, so would it be from now until this grant is accepted? Would you think you can get a report from the Board of Education to us, to, so we've got to understand that there are any greens with this during this timeframe?
Maybe a little bit out of, the motion before you, whereas when after long, where it's, it's applied to the grant, now, if you're requesting that order, the motion, is not being?
Well, I don't want to refer this to an ad hoc committee to, to discuss this entirely, which I will do, but it.
You won't do that, Councilman.
But that'll, that'll actually kill the actual, and I, and I don't want to have to do that. So, you know, but again, my concern is that the school board is on board with this, and it doesn't sound like that was properly addressed. I mean, there was a lot of hesitation whether they weren't or they were, I mean.
I may, I don't believe that the Board of Ed would always expect that, they use everything that goes on in a School Based Health Center. So, to request that would be going out of normal working procedures.
When the Board of Ed decides to fund their School Based Health Centers, I'll be happy to look at it.
So, again, then I do have a question regarding the actual, of the grant itself. Is the actual classes during school time?
Yeah, there's education during lunch hour, and also some after-school programs, which this, will help fund, because we do run a tight string project, we can't afford the nature hours.
So you, through the mayor, so you will need some type of approval from him to implement this program in the school during the lunch hour timeframe?
That's it. So, you know, that approval usually comes from the principal who's in control of the school.
And if the principal's against this type of program, then they could reject it.
If they're against preventing children from worrying about obesity and gaining more exercise, and obviously, they can say no.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through the chair, to you, Your Honor, actually. Who are the members of the Danbury Education Foundation? I can just kind of pull that string and find out what to ask you to grant. I was just curious who the members of the, of the foundation were. I've got a really, a question out of order, but do you want to ask me after the meeting? Yeah. We have a discussion. Ms. Barry, please.
Thank you. I just have a question for you, actually. If we approve this thing and we are granted this, this program, does it not then go to Board of Ed, and they decide if it's acceptable?
Well, again, our School Based Health Centers are driven by our Health Department.
I'm sorry, I meant the Health Department.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, they're funded by the Health Department. Obviously, the School Based Health Center, from broad view, would not age and break them without a sign off from Mr. Robbs, who then would socialize that up with his chain and, but clearly, all the funding, all the staff that is driven here in the city of Danbury.
So actually, one more comment. So actually, it's to our benefit to approve this thing.
Very much so.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Ms. Trumbett?
Well, here we go again. I feel like Will Rogers this month as well. I, I just don't understand that a grant, that we're requesting a grant that benefits the children of Danbury and the City of Danbury, how we could have this amount of discussion on a $10,000 grant that we are going to be receiving. If we ever did get the grant, and it was rejected by any committee, I hope that the, the different publications are here to report those people that, that vote in the negative for any type of grant that we would be receiving, and hopefully, it'll be taken up within the public on why they voted that way. Thank you.
Any further questions? Ms. Scotty, even location.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think what Councilman Perkins was getting to is that on page 42-2 of this grant information, it does state that the Danbury Education Foundation will act as a fiduciary agent if funds are awarded, so as to comply with 501(c)(3) requirements. And I, too, just have a question, is who is the Danbury Education Foundation? What, where are they consistent?
Danbury Education Foundation is a 501(c)(3) organization that raises money and distributes that to various schools throughout the district, geared primarily towards curriculum development, technology development, classroom management, and classroom instruction. So, being a fiduciary agent, they would simply be a passer for the check, because it has to go to the public and see where you can't go directly to the city. That money, would that be dispersed out, it's still a way of concern, based on their requirements and these, so forth. There's a board of directors that sits in place, I can provide a list of the board of directors for later on, in the past, supplied many grants in the school district, in the process of raising money right now, to run many grants. For this kind of work, mostly curriculum, for any classroom instruction, materials, books, training, you stay on numbers.
If I may, to follow to Councilwoman Trumbett's remarks, I appreciate his remarks, but I think that we're just trying to find out here just what is going on with the, the grant, the way it's being handled, and where the money's going to go, and that type of thing. I don't have a problem voting for the issue.
The 501(c)(3) is just a passer. Education Foundation wouldn't hold that many in the money, they would be offering to, to, to be dispersed out.
Further discussion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, accept this grant, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay.
Nay.
I just want to make a very quick comment. So, Ms. Perkins, I'm going to, um, so, I'll, 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 I, um, four, please.
Resolution, Grinear Airport property acquisition.
Ms. Saraceno?
Thank you, Your Honor. item forty-four, correct? I'd like to refer that to an ad hoc committee, Corporation Counsel, the airport administrator, and, um, Department of Planning.
And our commission consists of the following: Councilwoman Casupis, Councilwoman Seaberry, and Councilwoman McManus. Councilman Diskan. Item 45 is consent. Item 46.
I have report in ordinance, Charles Ives Authority for Performing Art.
Thank you, Your Honor. Report for video in the whole, January 22, 2007. Section 13A-56 to 13A-60 ordinance, creation powers and responsibilities, creation of the Charles Ives Authority for Performing Art. Mr. Kusumpis moved to receive the report and adopt the committee's recommendation and refer this to the next scheduled council meeting, seconded by Mr. Rattell. Discussion follows with questions to Dean Garret, Director of Finance and Personnel, Mayor Baldwin, Dr. Jane Schmader, President of Western Connecticut State University, and Lazo L. Pinter, Deputy Corporation Counsel, on the following issues. Financial obligations of present authority, unsecured loan, who is responsible to repay it, lease term on land, future fundraising, city or Western Connecticut State University monetary assistance if authority runs into future trouble, bonding, default issues for new authority, projected revenues for the next five years, what are the roles of the city and Western Connecticut State University, who owns the property, how much land is there, is there a value to the old authority to dissolve legal responsibility for existing debt, capital improvement plans, city police, private security, can an outside entity take over the management? Further comments from Mayor Baldwin and Dr. Schmader on the opportunity this partnership will bring to expand the venue of the park, elevate cultural life in the city and at Western Connecticut State University. Still needs to be private, still needs to have private fundraising, which the five year lease agreement will help. This is a public partnership and a broader use of the facility. Mr. Riley moved to question, seconded by Mr. Mrs. Bassel. Motion carried with 12 yes and 8 no votes. Attorney Pinter explained the statement requiring two changes in wording in ordinance in section 13A-56, paragraph B, section 1 and 2. It will be explained and discussed at the next council meeting. The original motion passed with 13 yes and 7 no votes. Mrs. Bassel moved to adjourn at 8:35 PM, seconded by Mr. Johnson. Motion passed unanimously. Amendments and wording mechanism passed, respectfully submitted, Joseph Tavon, President.
My pleasure, Counsel. Councilman Kusumpis.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the report, accept the committee's recommendation to the general ordinance, along with the two clerical changes suggested by Corporation Counsel, bearing the committee in the whole.
Motion made, seconded by Councilman Severy. Any discussion related to the House Council?
At the point of order, at the public hearing, Les Pinter was ruled that he could make his recommendation, so that wasn't part of the record. So that need to be presented this evening, so I'll ask Councilman Kusumpis to amend his motion to exclude Corporation Counsel's amendments, because they weren't presented correctly.
Really, a lot of order, Mr. Severy. Yes, if you remember back at the public hearing, the issue was there had been a motion on table, move to question, it's not amenable, and that's why we ended up up for this methodology. So, Mr. Kusumpis' motion is in order, and is ready to report. Further discussion?
Run a motion, am I correct? Run a motion that Mr. Kusumpis made for discussion. I have a question for the finance.
Further discussion?
If I may, through the chair, Finance Director, and also one for Corporation Counsel. For the record, just one more time for clarification. Who will be responsible for the money that is still owed by the authority that was in charge? The loans, the state loans?
The old board is responsible to pay off their own debts. They do not become the responsibility of the new authority.
So the city gives them X amount, is going to give X amount of money, and we will not be responsible whatsoever for any of the old loans?
That's correct.
Thank you. Follow up, please? Corporation Counsel. Again, if I may, for the record, liability to the city of Danbury, once we get involved, if we get involved with the lives authority?
I would frame that as not so much liability, as benefits. The collaboration of the city of Danbury and the authority would be of great benefit to the city, as was explained to the council before. Whatever liability there is, comes as a result of actions that the city might take, which are not authorized by statute. And we've proved, we've read the statute, we understand the statute to provide, as it does for any public recreational authorities like this, the statute provides a collaborative effort, provides broad powers to the authority, together with, joining with the municipality in allowing the authority to move forward and to do its work. So as far as liability is concerned, that would exist only if the municipality overstepped some authority, which, again, in our experience, really hasn't arisen with these kinds of entities before.
Thank you.
Further discussion?
Thank you, Your Honor. I really just want to make some comments about this proposal. I was very concerned, because we had a public hearing on this issue on the 22nd, it was a Monday, and with all due respect to Ms. Waller and Margaret Mitchell, there was no one here in support of this proposal, of creating this authority. And we are, we are asking the city to put in 75 grand to this proposal, but not a single member of the Board of Directors of the Charles Ives Center came and said, "We've got to do this, we've got to save it, it's really critical to the city of Danbury." The other thing I'm concerned about is the local banks that will be affected, Newtown Savings, supposedly not, because they have a secured loan for $153,000 on a single acre of property within the Charles Ives Center. And I can't imagine them being able to sell that, even if they foreclosed on it to anybody but the Charles Ives Center. Who would want to buy an acre of land in the Charles Ives Center? You can't put a car wash there, no Dunkin' Donuts, I mean, not very valuable. But the other bank is Union Savings Bank. These are local banks. These are the banks that buy the signs in Rogers Park to support the ball teams, that go to the breakfast, that go to the mayor's ball. And they're really getting a big hit on this, so I'm very lucky to support it. I'm sure there will be a majority of people who think it's a great idea, and I certainly wish the authority well.
Second, further discussion? Say no, no, I'll write my thoughts in favor, will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those signify by saying nay.
Nay.
If I may, through the chair, Councilman Perkins, Councilman Diskan, and Councilman Tappas, and the mayor. Motion passes 17.
I have report, rename and renumber Briar Ridge Road.
On the journey.
Thank you, Your Honor. Briar Ridge Road renaming and renumbering. Honorable Mayor Mark DeValton, January 18, 2007, common council members. Chairwoman Pauline Bassam, call the meeting to order at 6:15 PM. Committee members are Mary Tycho, who is president in the hospital, and Paul Rattella. The charge of the committee is to review a proposal for the, for a name change and renumbering issue for Briar Ridge Road. In attendance were Lazo Pinter, Deputy Corporation Counsel, Ben Chanesi as petitioner and ex officio, Robert Riley, ex officio. There's a positive 824 planning report to rename and renumber the road, but the planning commission does not support connecting the two road sections. Ben Chanesi gave some of the reasons he is asking for this name change. Deliveries are a problem, and emergency vehicles, 9/11, have trouble finding the houses since there is a gap between the roads. If you are on the wrong road, it takes about 15 to 20 minutes to get around to the right road. One side of the longer end of the road is in Danbury, and the other side is in Ridgefield. This is the older part of the road. The north end of the road is all in Danbury. Discussion followed about picking a new name for the north part of the road, to send to the planning department with a request for a survey for a name change and renumbering. Les Pinter said the request before the committee is to rename and renumber the road. The city can only make changes to city of Danbury Road. May be a problem with one half of the road in Ridgefield as far as the renumbering and renaming. Mr. Rattella said, "We would hold off on the renumbering for names." Mr. Rattella moved to send this back to the planning, to send out a survey to the property owners, along with what we call for the purpose of this meeting, the north end of the Briar Ridge. Both ends of Briar Ridge as an intact, everybody, with a proposal change to be executed to the, exclusive to the north end of the present Briar Ridge, changed to Mountain Memorial Road. Survey by planning to query the neighbors about a proposal name change to Mountain Memorial Road for the north end of the present Briar Ridge. We will hold off on the renumbering, seconded by Mrs. Bassam. Motion passed unanimously. Mr. Rattella made a motion to adjourn at 6:35 PM, seconded by Mrs. Bassam. Motion passed unanimously, respectfully submitted by Pauline Bassam, Chair, Paul Rattella, and Mary Tycho. Thank you.
My pleasure, Counsel. Questions, fellas?
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to receive the report, accept the committee's recommendation, and change the name to Bramble Ridge Road, and send it out for a public survey.
Motion made, seconded, Bramble Ridge Road. Okay. And your discussion about Bramble Ridge Road. So, down now, if I have my thoughts in favor, will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those signify by saying nay. Just a order to get a survey done. Item 48 to 53 were my consent. Your President, Department of Law.
Your Honor, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the reading of departmental reports, as all members have copies, and copies are on file in the City clerk's office.
Second, ready, and seconded by, item 47. Any discussion with Department of Law?
Thank you, Your Honor. Through the chair, Your Honor, to the Director of Health, Housing, and Welfare Department. Thank you very much. I just wondered if you have any stats you have regarding responses to city line 311 and/or Q alert system? Any stats coming in yet in terms of, you know, people calling in, things like that?
Absolutely. Do have stats, Your Honor.
We're actually running that unit, I did, actually, okay. Right now, first month, we're running about 15 to 20 calls a day, about 200 a month is how often we've seen another community commit a 311. Hartford, for example, will play about 200 calls a month each month, we see a real rate of effects, go to about 10 to 15 percent on those calls. Q alert generated going into the balance over the last few months. We have very simple questions, we're dealing with complex issues. We are developing a team to crunch that data, and what we'd like to do is provide a part of the unit report, monthly printout, is on calls to receive, conference address, and create a database, we're still in the process of developing software. You think this is an extra, very much, so I think we can.
And one other thing, I just would like to commend you and your entire staff, okay, of the Health, Housing, Welfare Departments, for their dedication and professionalism, especially those times during the holiday season. And I think you should be very, very proud of what you and everyone concerned has done. And I really commend you for your efforts, and I'm very happy for you that you are the director in place, and you're doing a great job, and I thank you again very much.
I do appreciate that. I'll relay your thoughts, and I have learned that the Department of Welfare does a wonderful job as well.
I had my fingers crossed when I said that. Thank you.
Further discussion?
To the Finance Director, please. Dean, in item 11, the plan of conservation and development, that $40,000, will it come out of this year's budget?
It will come out of our contingency.
And you were very kind to do a cost out for the 311, and I wanted to ask you about the, it looks like you charged almost $17,000 against City Hall Communications. Will we be able to pay our phone bills for the last quarter?
I think we will.
And the other thing, unit, $37,000 from salaries in unit, are we down a position in unit?
We do. We have a vacancy there, an assistant zoning enforcement officer, and we're using the accrual from that to fund this position.
And the one thing I didn't see in your cost out was billboards and newspaper ads, and I know there were billboards, and I know there were newspaper ads.
My understanding is those were at no charge.
They would be donations, then?
Not necessarily.
They're public service announcements.
The billboards are public service announcements?
The billboards being accepted donation last year, probably the year before, where Lamar would give us, each year, approximately three or four donations, for various public service announcements.
Do those donations have to come before the council?
They already have.
These billboards that are up now for 311? They're ours forever?
They, we are allowed to use, we report billboards three-year public service announcements.
And the newspaper ads?
Public service announcements.
Thank you.
Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Your Honor. If I may, I'd just like to recognize someone who was here tonight hiding in a corner. I don't know whether this is going to be his last meeting or not, but-
I'm not sure about that.
We're not sure about that. But anyway, I'd just like to congratulate him and wish him luck, whatever happens. He's done a great job for the city of Danbury. Our Fire Marshal, Barry Rigger.
Yes, I do want to say, I spent a couple of days down at 311, and I spent a couple of hours each day, and I sat and I listened, and I will tell you, I was amazed at the number of phone calls that did come in. The people that were there who answered the phone, they were very, very informative to the people, they gave them directions, and most of them were just directions, or when is the meeting, or what, who can I call? And I want to congratulate this new part that we're having, this 311, because I'll tell you, something I've done for years, I've always been on the telephone, I've always done telemarketing, and this is like a telemarketing service, and I was just happy to be down there. I mean, it's just fun, and if the council gets a chance to go down there, she can spend an hour or so, go down and listen, and find out what's going on in our city. Thank you.
Yeah, I inadvertently called 311 when I was dialing 411, and they showed me the, I tried to ask for a phone number, and they were very helpful as well.
Make your life better, Mr. Scott.
Thank you.
Go away.
On the Chief of Police? I've been noticing a lot of the new crosswalk signs, stop for pedestrians in the bus walk. I've been noticing a lot more lately around the city. My concern is that people just don't stop. I know, we all seen it, we all tried to cross, and they just don't, they don't stop for those signs. So my question is, what do you, what's the police doing to try to enforce that more? Because I'm afraid that someone will get hit, especially on Main Street, when it's a two-lane road, one car stops, and the other car just keeps going where you don't even see the pedestrian. And I was wondering, how many tickets have you given out for not stopping for the bus walk?
I'm not prepared to tell you how many tickets. I don't know. Speaking of 311, we got a 311 complaint about that very subject today, and we're coming up with some different strategies for the downtown as the weather gets nicer, because we realize it is a problem. Trying to get some people down there in evening hours, we think we're having a problem. We're working on it, I specifically tell you tonight.
Your Honor, a follow-up is, what's the procedure to get one of those put in place? Is that through your office, through the mayor's office? How does that come about for parking one of those pedestrian signs? I know there was, used to be one on Deer Hill Avenue, put the city hall employees across, but that's no longer there. So I don't know what the procedure is to have one put in place.
Typically, typically, we pick those up for the late times, for plumbing purposes, it becomes problematic if it falls out. I mean, we can-